All right, good evening everyone who just came in. We start our official Board of Selectmen meeting from March 2nd. And say I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Seven seconds of minutes for our regular meeting, February 17th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, special meetings for the budget, February 17th and February 23rd.
I'm making a motion except for February 17th and February 23rd, budget meetings.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Yes?
Last couple of weeks when I've gone to the dump on my Wednesday trips, I found the dump is in great condition. The transfer section, excuse me.
I know, she's gonna corrupt you.
But in particular, the swap shop was very orderly and clean. It was nice to see it that way.
Good.
Pass that on to the folks who work there.
I will pass that on.
Is Wednesday the retirees' day?
I don't know, maybe it is. I see a bunch of gray-haired guys down there all the time.
That's the only idea you go, isn't it, Bob?
Yeah.
Well Sean, you're a gray hair too.
There you go Saturday morning. He drives you into the swap shop all the time.
And anyone else? Yes, Neil?
So what I just mentioned is a perfect example of what public comment is. It is not a question and answer, it's not to interact with each other under this forum. If people have issues with the roads, get hold of Phil. You have an issue with the land, get hold of Liz. If you have any other questions, you can get hold of Alice, you can get hold of Scott, you can get hold of a whole bunch of people. This railroading of the first selectmen needs to stop. Be respectful. Just like the fire department, we have a chain of command. If you don't get the answer from Phil, call Liz. She'll call you back. Prior selectmen, I had a few issues, she helped me out. Same thing with Liz. But to come to these meetings and try to get into question and answer and railroad any three of these members needs to stop. This town is a great town, we need to come together and put all that passion to make this town that much better and support the people that are running it. Don't respond to fire.
Anyone else?
I'd just like a comment. I hope they see that happening. If it is happening, it is not good, but I'm seeing it happen.
All right, we're gonna move on. Correspondence. I have a very nice letter from March to bold thanking us for the opportunity to serve as a member of the Nuclear Energy Advisory Council. And she is aware that we appointed at the last meeting Ed Munster to take that position over. She has graciously said that she will...
Sorry.
That's okay. That she will go to the March meeting with Ed and kinda just walk him through. But I... March is very sweet, as we all know, and she's put a lot of time and effort into the town, so I think it's very classy that she sent us a thank you note. I think probably before our thank you note.
I thought they crossed paths.
I think they did too. All right, so that's that. Let's see, I have a report from the state troopers. So this is something I just wanna spend a few minutes and talk about. Last Thursday, a week ago Thursday, Joe Courtney came to Hattam. And it was the week of the kids' school vacation. And he came in and spoke to youth and family. And I was present, Kathy Ino was present too. And there was a great group of kids talking there, trying to get education out. And there's been a lot of hearings and there's been a lot of forums on this, on heroin and opiates and how they're affecting our community. I know that Art Laneras is gonna do another forum at the firehouse in April 15th, on March 15th. At that meeting, Trooper Millardo said that he had to use his Narcan once to revive someone that was on a heroin overdose. And, you know, being in the room and talking with everyone, it was very scary and it was very real. And it's an issue that hits our community, not just with our youth, but with everyone. I received a text message over the weekend from Officer Millardo telling me that he once again had to use the Narcan this weekend to revive another individual. And then I had a text from Trooper Connolly on Monday letting me know that there were two near overdoses in Hattam this weekend. So it's really scary, it's frightening. I think that people, the word needs to be out, we need to educate, there's things that we need to do as a community. And I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention that it's happening here, it's not something that isn't happening in our community. So again, it could be our youth, it could be anyone in this room, it could be any age, and it's really very scary. So I think that we need to pull together as a community to get education out and have there be support. I'm gonna be looking to do more of that and, you know, as much as we can from the town. But in reading the report that comes from the state troopers for the month of February, they do talk about the overdoses that are in here. And they do talk about the program that Joe Courtney came. And I think it's kinda neat because when youth and family were in Washington DC at a conference, they had an opportunity to sit one-on-one with Joe Courtney. And he listened to them and he felt that it was important to come to town and speak to the kids. So, I mean, I gotta tell you, we have kids that are really smart kids and brave kids to sit there and give up part of their time on their school vacation to really talk to him about this issue, to do something. So I applaud them. And he said that he felt that our program, at least with youth and family, was heads above many other towns. So I just wanna commend them for the work that they do, although there's always a lot to be done in that area. Motor vehicle accidents without injuries, there were 15, there were none with injuries. There was 144 motor vehicle infractions, no DWIs, which is good. 21 alarms assisting citizens, there were no burglaries, there were seven disturbances, there were 13 suspicious incidents, and there was 219 patrol checks. So, I don't know, it was pretty compelling to hear the story that they shared with bringing someone back to life, so it's pretty scary. So that's that report. I think that's it for correspondence. Okay, so we have tax refunds next. There's a motor vehicle refund to Steven or Patricia Goebbach for $199.30. There is a real estate refund to Mark McWilliams for $844.46. And there is a correction that we had brought up at the last meeting. For Hyundai Leasing Company, there was a duplicate bill, so this is the corrected amount to Hyundai Leasing for $448.77. And another real estate to Ralph and Ronald Benelik for $40.56. So that's all I have for tax refunds.
I'll make a motion except by three times.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, I have a couple of appointments to make. Your gentleman should have received a copy of her resume, of the candidate that we hired for municipal agent. We had many people apply for the municipal agent position. Eleanor Farrell, who is an attorney from Middletown, who has experience in legal aid and legal services, applied for the position. She's worked in nonprofits and legal services her whole life. She's very dedicated to seniors, she has a lot of experience with Medicare, Social Security. She is a candidate that stood far above everyone else. She will start on March 14th. She will work a minimum of 10 hours a week. And she will be housed at Public Health with Candy Casal, there's an extra office there. She will be able to get on the road and meet with individuals that aren't able to get out. And I think it's a good thing that she's there in that building because it allows privacy. That was one of the concerns that we have, for seniors to be able to get assistance that they need. She has worked on senior handbooks, she's worked on a lot of different things, and she's very enthusiastic and she's very excited. And I'm very happy that she is interested in the position and she has agreed to accept it, providing that we approve this, this evening. So...
Okay. Was there a committee? Who, like, can we, how is...
We interviewed a handful of people and then the final committee was Alice's HR, Candy, and myself.
And this is your recommendation?
Yes.
That I never, yeah, I didn't know her, obviously.
No.
I'll make a motion. Eleanor Farrell for municipal agent.
I'll say.
Any discussion?
Just based on the committee's recommendation?
Yeah. No, she's phenomenal, I'm very excited. She'll be a great, great fit to the community. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Charter revision panel. Give each of you... Okay. So the last Board of Selectmen meeting on February 3rd, we announced that we were gonna put a charter revision panel together to look at the charter. It's been over 12 years since our charter's been revised. And we have had a handful of individuals respond to that. I wanted to make it fair, the way the charter statute reads is it can be up to, the committee can be anywhere between five and 15 individuals. Minority representation needs to be one-third of that. And if there's any elected officials on the board, that also needs to be one-third. So I really wanted to break it out. Party alliances, it's all about Hattam and getting us to where we need to go. So I'm recommending to be appointed to the board the following individuals. William Bowles, Kate Anderson, John Fernandez, Wayne Ruddy, Harlan Frederickson, Audrey Brooks, Mike Bettishtoni, Bruno Morasuti, Amy Jakes Purdy, and Tom Rycholsky. The only individual serving right now in an elected position is Harlan Frederickson. And that gives us four Rs, four Ds, and two Us.
How many people are applied?
I probably had, I think half them now, I probably had like 16 or 17. I really wanted to keep it at nine, but I also wanted the math to kinda work out, so...
So is it you paired them?
I did, yep.
All right, any reason we're not going with it? Me asking me to vote on it, I don't know...
No, when we talked...
Why you eliminated certain people or added certain people?
When we talked about it initially, back in, I think in January, you had said to me, you talked about the number. And we said five, between five and 15. You had said to me you thought that there were, you know, seven or eight when you were on the charter revision the last time. I went back and I looked, and there were nine. I think that having five in case of absences and people being sick is too few, especially because this board's gonna meet over the next 14 months. And having 15 people in a room to try to make a decision, I think, is too many. So I figured nine or 10 is a good number. I actually thought I was pushing it with 10 because if people are sick or don't make it, you know...
We have a time crunch, right?
Yep, yep.
And so, but I... If you ask me to approve a panel, but I don't even know who applied. I don't know all the people that applied.
Okay.
I guess I would feel if we're going less than the max, then I feel I'm either choosing somebody over somebody else, or I'm eliminating somebody, but I don't have cause. I mean, I don't know why I would eliminate a person or choose somebody over somebody else. I don't like, I... We had nine and it worked out pretty well. I don't care if you pick me, I don't care. You guys may feel differently, but I don't... If we're not going with the max, I feel like somebody might be out there who wanted to be on it and they ask me, "Sean, why didn't you pick me?"
Well, I followed the statute as to what it said, it didn't... It was just, you know...
I know, it'd be five to 15.
It said five to 15, no more than one-third or two-thirds of a majority party.
That's fine.
You know...
No, I'm not worried about the numbers, you did the numbers.
Yeah, I mean...
I'm just saying that if somebody wants to do something, usually, we're very lucky to get volunteers, people do things, and if somebody can come to me and say, "Hey, I wanted to be on that and you didn't put me on, why?" And my answer would be to them, "Well, I didn't know you asked to be on it." Or, "I didn't put you on because I don't know why I put you on."
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to share all of that, just...
I mean, I know we have a time crunch.
I'm just picking, I mean, I have people asking me back in November and December, so I was just keeping...
Bill Bowles, I highly object to Bill Bowles. Who else?
Kate Anderson.
They're all good people.
They're all here.
Everybody you said is all, they're all good people.
Sean, they're all printed out right, I'm gonna go on that piece of paper, right there. Right here. All their names are right here.
Oh.
That's okay.
Well, I got you. Well, there's no problem with any of these people. They're all one...
No, I mean, I have Board of Education, Board of Finance...
Right, right. It's the people that, the six spots that we're not filling, they're good people too.
They could do a good job. You've gotta cut it off, something like, so each people are good people, what you want with this?
There's nothing wrong with it, how much wrong with the 10 of us?
No, nothing. There's not anything wrong with anybody.
Are they gonna be harmful to the committee or something?
No, well, that's why I just, you know, again, numbers and trying to have a committee, you know yourself. So... And again, I was doing four, four, and two. So that's what I was trying to say.
I don't worry about the party affiliations, that's not an issue. And even if it was, even if it was two-thirds ones, I mean, people getting on a committee, I'm not worried about party affiliation. They're gonna, they're going to do their job like all other people on committees do. They get on the committee and they do their job, it's not really a party, party issue. I'm just saying, I'm very difficult kind of voting to approve when people ask to be on it, I don't know who they were yet. Why am I picking Tom Rycholsky, who's a great guy, over somebody else? Who, I don't know.
Yeah, I pretty much went in the order that I got and paid attention to party and back and forth and so... Because we had said nine, I just kinda stayed with, you know, that. And I had two people on the same day request within an hour of each other, so we just felt, you know, I didn't wanna pick one versus the other.
Another thing is, I don't know, because I don't know, the Charter Revision Commission could bring up anything else, anything, I suppose, they wanted to.
Yeah, so with the charter revision, there's things that, you know, first of all, with charter revision, there's public hearings, so people have a voice to say whatever they feel. There's two public hearings that are mandated. We're gonna have them look at all of the amendments, we're gonna have them look at the positions of elected officials, we're gonna have the manner in how vacancies are filled because we had situations where we had unaffiliated seats and making sure because that wasn't clear in the charter, that's something that recently came up.
Well, they can do anything, they can do anything.
Yep, I mean, the bidding process, timing for the budget, review the Office of Treasure because that's changed. Treasure isn't really doing the things that Treasure was doing the last time. I mean, you know, we're in, as things develop and as things come about. So, you know, they also have the right to make any changes or modifications that they see fit, and they have 14 months to do it.
Also, I know, I know if it would be come up, I guess they would do anything they want, but there was an issue that was brought up, which was a pretty hotly contested issue, which had a bunch, a lot of hearings on it, on the work of full-time elected officials, the way they should work, how many they should work, et cetera. And if that comes up, I see two names that are spouses of people who are currently elected officials. So I don't know if they...
I would say they should use themselves, but, you know...
Recuse themselves or something, and then you're down, and you're down to seven people.
Right.
If that happens to become an issue, which I know, I don't know if it will with them, but it was a very hotly contested, divisive issue not too long ago.
I mean, this is so public with public forum that, you know, I think you're gonna get a lot of input from the committee. Each of the departments are gonna be asked to, you know, give input to the committee or the commission to see what, you know, things that might come up. I mean, at the end of the day, it's their decision. But I would think that these individuals would recuse themselves of that, and I would think whoever gets appointed as the chair of this committee would make sure that that would happen.
Well, I guess, I mean, I would say if we had up to 15 people who wanted to be on this committee, I would think the best thing for us to do is approve all 15 on this committee. I just cannot vote to approve a committee of nine people, eliminating people that are asked for it, if I don't even know who they are. You can help vote me, but I don't think I can do it, but if I, if somebody who, I don't know, Ed could have been on, Ed could have asked to be on it and I'm approving it and Ed might say, "Why didn't you put me on the list?" What am I gonna say to Ed? I don't know. I know you want it, yeah. So, I'm just saying, I can't, I'll have to say A or abstain.
But I think this is a good list. And all those other people have an opportunity during the meetings, they were public meetings, to make themselves heard.
All right, I mean, we'd need to do this tonight, they have 45 days to time it out, so, in order to stay, so, you know...
No, I'll say A or abstain, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Say it.
All right. Do you want to make a motion?
Do you want any, what's the motion?
Motion is to appoint...
The most people?
Yep.
Or the, this whole document?
Well, what we should probably do is do the whole resolution, and I can read it. No?
It's a whole puppy? You want?
Yeah, I think we should, just for the record, I think it should be. So, resolution defining the charge of the Charter Revision Commission and appointment of members to such, to said commission. Whereas pursuant of Section 7-19A of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Hattam desire to appoint 10-member Charter Revision Commission consisting of, typo, 10 electors of the Town of Hattam. And whereas the names of those members who are appointed and have agreed to serve on the Charter Revision Commission are William Bowles, Kate Anderson, John Fernandez, Wayne Ruddy, Harlan Frederickson, Audrey Brooks, Michael Bettishtoni, Bruno Morasuti, Amy Jakes Purdy, and Tom Rycholsky. Whereas pursuant to Section 7-19B of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Board of Selectmen desires to make recommendations to the Charter Revision Commission. And whereas pursuant to Section 7-19B of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Board of Selectmen must establish when said commission shall submit its draft report to the Board of Selectmen. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hattam that the following 10 electors of the Town of Hattam shall constitute a Charter Revision Commission. Again, the names are listed, William Bowles, Kate Anderson, John Fernandez, Wayne Ruddy, Harlan Frederickson, Audrey Brooks, Michael Bettishtoni, Bruno Morasuti, Amy Jakes Purdy, and Tom Rycholsky. Be it further resolved that the Charter Revision Commission shall from their members elect a chairperson and a secretary and shall conduct their actions in accordance with laws and requirements of Chapter 99 of the Connecticut General Statutes. And be it further resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hattam that the following recommendations be directed to the Charter Revision Commission forthwith. Number one, review all substantive... Sorry. Review of all substantive or administrative amendments identified by the Town of Hattam Board of Selectmen review of the Charter, Town Charter. Number two, review the positions of elected officials in Article 4 of the Town Charter for possible amendments to such positions, including addition or elimination of such positions. Number three, review the manner of filling vacancies in elected office or appointed office, in particular, the provisions of alternate seating and compliance with minority representation rules and Article 4 of the Town Charter for possible amendment. Number four, review the provisions of the Town Charter regarding the preparation, submission, and adoption of the annual budget for possible modifications to the timer requirements and mandated meetings, including public hearings. Number five, review the powers duties and jurisdiction of all Town Charter mandated boards, commissions, and agencies, as well as those created outside the Town Charter with the consideration of possible amendment, consolidation, or elimination. Number six, review the requirements for the competitive bidding of the Town Charter to consider increasing the current bid requirement for expenditures in excess of $2,500. Number seven, review of elected office of treasurer with consideration of possible elimination of such position. Review by the Charter Revision Commission is not restricted to the areas identified above. Be it further resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hattam that the Charter Revision Commission submit to the clerk of the Town of Hattam its draft report no later than April 1st of 2017. That was a mouthful.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept this resolution.
Okay, I will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. Old business. I don't have any old business. Do you? Okay. New business, is it a...
General, just, just a question to you, if you heard, any, somebody had asked me about the discussions with East Hattam, we got an order, anything new?
No, no, I mean, there was a meeting...
So if someone thought there was something new and they asked me, I didn't know.
With East Hattam?
Yeah, discussion.
No, we had, we had a meeting with DPH in Deep... Last Thursday, a week ago Thursday. When was it Thursday? At the Capitol. And Art Laneras, Senator Laneras was there, Phil Miller was there. Everyone's on board with getting this water issue taken care of in Tylerville. All the studies have shown that the most economic way of doing that is tying into Chester, as it was discovered before. So that's really the only new, as far as East Hattam goes, they're interested, but they're...
In getting water and...
In getting water, they already have a sewer system.
Yeah, they do.
But it's way too early for them to really weigh in until that water is set. You're welcome. All right, new business. There was an award given to refurbish the Hattam NAC volunteer fire department tank refurbishment bid. And the bids were submitted and they are recommending EJ Fountain, if I'm saying that correct, company, they awarded the contract. So we need to vote on that. There's no price here, though. Did they give you any?
Look on the green sheet.
Green sheet?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, there were three bidders. The lowest bid... The lowest bid was $54,822. EJ Bowden was in the middle, $57,600. And Gowan's Knight was the third bid at $65,597.
Would we have budgeted for that?
We have budgeted for that.
It's not over.
Yeah, I know this came in under budget. But I don't remember, Sean, to be honest with you, the exact number. It's not, it's under budget. I know that. They're saying that even though, this is, this came from Tom Danaher over in Hattam Neck. Even though EJ was not the lowest cost bidder, they were the only participant that is fully compliant with the bid specifications provided. So they included everything that they needed in the bid. Tom is here, Liz.
Oh, yes, there, oh, there he is.
I tried to speak. Thank you for coming. I didn't see you over there.
It's not, it's not uncommon for us to not necessarily take the lowest bid all the time. Taking, you know, needing bids when, especially it comes to safety or when department needs something that's particularly for their use. Not always just can't grab the lowest, but it's not something like we're talking about cutting a tree down or something like that. We're talking about, you know, piece of equipment, so.
But they didn't comply with the bid package.
If they didn't either, anyway.
Right.
They couldn't be considered.
Right.
It should be limited, that would be good.
Yeah. And for the differential, I mean, it's less than $2,000. If they included everything in there for that price, they're definitely in the ballgame. You know, compared to what the other bids were.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid as recommended by Hattam Neck Fire Department, right?
Any discussion?
No, just like, I'm sure they have a committee on it, right? They're going to be on it. But it comes under bid, that's great. I know that the fire departments are usually very particular who works on your equipment and how they work on their equipment. So I'm sure they'll be, they'll be watched very closely.
Tom, how long will that take?
Oh, it's very long.
Okay, that's good. That's pretty quick. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. I think that's a new business. Yep, okay, public comment. Yes?
All right, I have a simple solution to the discussion you had about the, the charge and getting people for it. Say you have 15 people or whatever and you don't really have that many, maybe nine. The fairest way to do it is put them all on the lottery. That way, everybody gets a fair shot and then there's no acquisition about why this person is picked over this person.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.